Let me take time to recognize the contributions of one of our recently retired board members, Monty Edson. Monty, would you mind standing up and coming over to the podium, please? No spanking involved. Because I'm sure you're gonna want to make some comments of great gravitas for the rest of the board, those kinds of things. Monty, we truly appreciate your service, almost four years, and all the things you helped us get through from the superintendent's search process, serving, I had the pleasure of serving with you on the compensation committee, subcommittee of that, the whole selection of Mr. Simic, bringing him on board, helping with his orientation and our orientation to him, and then, most recently, our mission, vision, goals process which you led for us and just did an excellent job. So, my heartfelt thanks, and I think the thanks from everyone else on the board. So, in recognition of your service, we have a resolution, and it's a little lengthy, so bear with me because you accomplished so many things. Whereas Bee Montgomery Edison has faithfully served Lake Forest High School students, staff, and communities with dedication as a member of the Board of Education of Lake Forest School District 115 since 2011. And whereas he was a member of the Education Committee from 2011 to 2014 and provided oversight to major district educational initiatives, new programs, and made recommendations to the Board of Education on major topics or matters related to curriculum and instruction. And whereas he served on the Policy Committee from 2011 to 2013 and worked diligently to ensure the district was up-to-date and comprehensive in scope in all of its school policies. And whereas he served as the district's representative to the North Suburban Special Education District in 2011 through 2013, and through his work showed a commitment to the possibilities in every student. And whereas he served on the Superintendent's Search Committee from 2011 to 2012 and was dedicated to strengthening our high school and excellence in school government. And whereas he spearheaded the Mission Vision Goals Committee, excuse me, from 2011 to 2012 and was dedicated, excuse me, I read the wrong line, from 2013 to 14 and spent countless hours to ensure the district created an inspiring and tangible vision, mission, and milestone-driven roadmap to achieve its gold, goals. And whereas Monty's commitment to his responsibilities as a board member went above and beyond, his insight and thoughtful questions raised the level of conversation, and his wealth of governance experience improved processes and outcomes. Monty's fellow board members and the District 115 community appreciate his dedication to the students and citizenry of Lake Forest High School, his kind nature, and his strong fortitude. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School District 115 does express itself, as well as the parents, the students, and the staff and citizens of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Knollwood, in sincere appreciation and gratitude to Bee Montgomery Edison for all he has done to advance the quality of education in our communities, adopted this ninth day of September in 2014. In recognition of all that, we have a little frame open in that, and I know that you sit right there. Thank you, Monty, thank you very much. Would any other board members like to make a comment?
I would just say, Monty, thanks for putting the pressure on those of us left behind. We got a lot of work to do, based upon what you've accomplished.
Dump and run, right.
Thanks for everything you've done.
As Dick was reading that, I shuddered to think of some of those, the Policy Committee. That was not the most exciting assignment. I don't know who's on that right now. But, no, it was a great learning experience for me. My two boys, who grew up here, went from Everett School through the middle school through the high school, did a great job, and I was pleased to be able to serve when asked. So, I learned a lot, and learned a lot about the school, and certainly had fun working with all of you, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Monty, and I learned a lot from you.
Don't run away yet, Monty. I gotta say something nice about you, I only get so many chances in public. Two things that really stand out about your service to the district, Monty. One is something that many people in the community don't even know about, and that is your commitment to college-bound opportunities. And so, that's humanitarian undertaking, giving children an opportunity, students an opportunity to pursue a college career that otherwise might not have the means. And you're very passionate about that, and pursued that with a great deal of vigor and encouraged all of us to participate in that, and I hope that we have other advocates as vocal as you are for that. And the other thing, in addition to the wisdom, or the humanity, is the wisdom that you showed repeatedly, the Mission Vision Goals process, and then also your kind, but also probing guidance through your very prudent questioning, repeatedly just made us work harder and work smarter. And for both of those things and other intangibles, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Now, on with the other official business of the board. Thank you again, Mr. and Mrs. Edson. Let's have a roll call.
Here. Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here. Thank you, I think the next part of business, the president's report, I have to show him, it is the sincere regret that I have to report that our friend, a fellow board member and board president, Todd Bergner, has elected to resign from the board effective last Friday. So, I'll be serving as president pro tem here in the interim. Todd made a very difficult decision, I know, did not come easily to him. He cares very, very deeply about his responsibilities here and the high school generally, but as a result of a sudden and unexpected increase in his work responsibilities, he felt it was in the best interest of the district and his family that he stepped away from something, and unfortunately, it had to be the high school. So, we wish Todd the best. We'll schedule an appreciation ceremony, just like we had for Monty, when we can, and again, speaking for myself, I certainly wish him all the best, and I know this was a terrible, terribly difficult decision for him. I don't know if any other board members would like to comment. The board is reviewing its options as to how we will fill the board vacancy that's created by Todd's resignation, and you can expect, the public can expect, an announcement before the end of the week as to how we're gonna do that. We have some options, and we have a board meeting tomorrow to begin to discuss those things. We will also discuss board officer positions, and you should expect to see an announcement there as well, how the board, in its wisdom, thinks it's best to go forward in that regard. So, with that, let's talk about exciting things. Opening a school, always a tremendously exciting time, and anything else Mr. Simic thinks is important in his superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'd like to pass the microphone, as it were, off to Mr. Rogers to begin. Very glad to see some students joining us here tonight, and the stars of the show, without any question.
Fantastic. So, we're off to a great start again this year. I want to tell you, we've got a lot of exciting things happening at the school. So, we deployed Chromebooks to all of our freshman class, and it went quite smoothly. There's a lot of excitement, there's a buzz in the building. Our teachers are earnestly at work with the new initiative, developing their practices, having great conversations about teaching and learning and technology. So, it's all very exciting. Next month, we're gonna actually present a formal report on the Leading Edge Learning Initiative. Book Buy went very smoothly, and I'm sure you'll talk about that a little bit in a bit. The Innovation Incubator, it's, I think, is one of the exciting things that are happening at the school. So, the Innovation Incubator, which we saw a presentation at the end of last year, is up and running. We had a soft opening this week, and we'll have our official grand opening in the beginning of October where we'll invite members of the community. But again, that program involves students working with expert mentors from the community. Today, we had a professor from Northwestern talking about the Business Canvas Model. We actually have students developing their own product ideas, researching, innovating, if you will, so it's all pretty exciting. Tonight, we're featuring our open house, and so I'll be excusing myself soon to head over there, but welcoming the new families to Lake Forest, as well as many of the other ones. Our students, one of the, you know, we look at, we'll talk about data, I think, over the next, you know, meeting, a couple meetings, some of the workshops that we'll have. One of the most important pieces of data is our kids' happiness, and you can see it in their body language and smiles on their faces. So, I think we're off to a great start. They're smiling when they come in, they're smiling when they leave. They were a little nervous the other day when we had a storm on Friday, and we had to hold them in the school for an extra 10 minutes, but as soon as the clouds passed, they were also smiling. But lots of great things. So, I'm proud and happy to introduce two members of our student leadership team. So, before us, we have, to my right, the Student Council President, Luke Gibson, and the Student Council Vice President, Lena Spigos, and they're gonna tell you a little bit about some of the student happenings around the school.
Thank you, guys, for having us here this evening.
So, like Mr. Rogers said, I'm Luke Gibson, the president of Student Council, and this is Lena Spigos. For those of you who don't know right now, we're in the process of organizing homecoming at our high school, which is gonna happen on September 27th, and... Oh, okay, I got it. Sorry about that. And a lot of times when students hear about homecoming at the high school, particularly the underclassmen who kinda, you know, think about the stigma behind homecoming, that it's not a big deal, so you shouldn't go, and that's something that we've been trying to change for a couple of years. Unfortunately, nothing has come through in the past couple of years, so this year, we're really trying to make some changes to amp up attendance and excitement as well. So, the whole homecoming idea is based around the slogan, "Homecoming for a Cause," because we are raising money for Greenwood Elementary, which is a school in Waukegan. So, portions of our profits are gonna go towards that school, trying to rebuild their library, send them books, and even throughout the year, add a piece of equipment to their playground because that, we noticed, was very old. So, what we did was amped up ticket prices from $10 to $15, so that extra $5 is gonna go towards Greenwood Elementary. And then, throughout the week before homecoming, we'll be raising money through song requests. So, we're gonna have kids donate money or, you know, buy songs to be played at homecoming. And then also, we're partnering with NHS this year, which is National Honor Society, and they're raising money by selling lollipops, so that's just, 100% of that money is all going towards the elementary school. As for Spirit Week, which is the week leading up to homecoming, that Saturday, we're in the process of choosing what the days, you know, are gonna be, because each day, kids dress up in a different costume or whatever. This year, the pep rally is a week early, so it'll happen next Friday, when it was usually the Friday right before homecoming or the day of the football game. And the idea behind that was just that we wanted to, you know, amp up the excitement towards homecoming if people hadn't heard about it, but from what I've heard and what from many people keep coming up to tell me is that the excitement is rising and it's good, because, oh, I forgot to mention the most important part, that we changed homecoming to formal, a formal dance, and, you know, in the past, I mean, I don't know if any of you guys have been there, but people leave within the first half hour, they don't, you know, they don't wear a tie or anything, they just kinda go to check it out, hoping that maybe some year it's gonna be better than the last, but that hasn't happened yet. So, we're hoping this year, and, so anyway, the excitement level is for sure rising because people are, you know, freaking out about finding dates, but, you know, in the end, that was the best way to get attendance, because if you told people that, you know, we were gonna make it formal, that may not have drawn as much attention to the students. So, so far, it seems like it's working.
And definitely, a big help is, the social media aspect of everything, you know, kids already, the last week, have been getting asked to homecoming in creative ways, as we all know. So, posting to Instagram, posting to Twitter, we have this running hashtag called "Do It For Hoco," which kinda just means whenever you post something related to homecoming, this tag will group it all together. So, already, kids are kind of excited about the whole event, and we hope that all the asking starts kinda happening soon, and we'll see where it goes. I know some people, we were talking before, the junior class, they are even doing, drawing out of a hat, because it's less like romantic dates and more just like, "Go as friends, everyone has their own date." So, we'll see where that goes. Sorry, you can continue.
Just one more thing before Lena says a few things about that week as well. Another thing that we did last year for the first time to once again try to, you know, make people more excited was window painting around town. You may have seen some stores had blue and gold painting on their windows. Last year, that was our really only change from the years before, so we're hoping that, you know, this combined with making it formal dates, you know, will make people more excited. So, we have businesses in Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, you know, who are anxious for us to come over and paint on their windows, so hopefully, that'll draw attention to the whole community as well.
So, a lot of changes coming this year with homecoming. Luke touched on Spirit Week, kinda the whole dress-up days, and the pep rally, which we, it's always a fun event, school-wide, lots of support. Another kind of big change this year will be the homecoming t-shirts. Last year wasn't as successful, so this year, we hope to have a lot of success with that. We're doing, every t-shirt is one color, which is not usually how it goes. Usually, we have every grade a separate color, but we hope that this way, everyone will kinda be united, everyone will wear them to the games, and we can kind of all appear as a united student body. And also, we're kind of tagging along with Scout Nation, which is the club run at the school that is, how do you describe Scout Nation? It's like a...
It's just like a spirit club, pretty much.
Yeah, so we're, we'll be partnering with them for excitement, making posters, making announcements for the game, for the dance, kinda just getting everyone ready. We're really excited about all the changes that are coming, so we want everyone to be well-aware of this new homecoming that's, that'll be soon, a couple more weekends.
And right now, we don't have many class-by-class updates. Usually, each class will have a specific task that they're trying to accomplish, but right now, the whole Student Council is really focusing on homecoming. But once we have that gap between homecoming and turnabout, which is the dance in January, that's usually when each class, you know, focuses on fundraising or community service, specific tasks. So, I think that's all we have today, so thank you for having us.
Just a quick closing remark. We just really hope that this year, the community and everyone, even outside of the school, gets involved with the whole homecoming. Hopefully, the window painting will do a good job of that, and just kind of all around town, hearing the word of homecoming will get everyone to the game and to the dance, and we're excited, very excited for this. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Luke and Lena. Could you, why don't you mention the date one more time, so that it'll go on video, and hopefully, the community will catch it?
Yes, it's September 27th, and the main idea is that it's formal. If you wanna bring a date, bring a date. If you wanna go with a group, go with a group. We just want you there to represent Lake Forest High School, so, see you there.
Great. Thanks, Lena, and thanks, Luke. Last year, the painting of the windows was really well-received, and a lot of excitement generated by that. It's really great to see. And the community likes to know what's going on, and painted windows is one of those really tangible things, hey, something cool is happening at the high school, so.
Well, maybe this year, you could paint the superintendent's house, possibly.
No, we're good, it's all good. Yeah, well, actually, it doesn't need painting, though.
Just in the spirit of trying to get everybody involved, you know?
Fresh coat of paint. I don't know that the colors would work out for us, though. Yeah. So, the start of school is one of the most exciting things that happens in any community, and a couple of, a couple of stories that I think are particularly appropriate illustrate that. One of those is the fact that, the first day for teachers, are, we got, see our principal completely out of comfort zone, and after a couple opening remarks, out came the stage crew and dropped off a chair and a guitar and an amp, and sang, he sang a song, and demonstrated a lot of the risk-taking and that trying new stuff and putting yourself out there that we're wanting our teachers to do, and by extension, obviously, wanting our kids to do. And it was one of those really good moments, a lot of appreciation for that, really great. Personal favorite story is the first day of school, you watch all the kids pour in, and in comes this guy, and he's not as tall as some of the kids coming in, and he's, you know, pretty obviously a freshman, and he comes in, and he's, I don't know, about 10 minutes late. And he walks in, and the first question is, "Am I late?" And it's like, "Yeah, you're really late." Okay? Oh! And then off he goes down the hall in the same leisurely pace that he came in, and, you know, just like, yeah, welcome to freshman year. So, I think we're gonna be seeing this guy around for the next four years. He'll keep us entertained in a lot of ways. Our enrollment trends, a couple of really interesting things happening there. We are actually, we're up from where we thought we would be. We are only two students down from last year overall. That number always moves around, we have a hard time counting it ahead of time. We had a lot of new families move in, had new family orientations, we had all sorts of folks, a very unusual bunch, again, of families moving in from far-flung places. We have a student that was in Germany last year, the Czech Republic, another student in a high school in Brussels, another in Paris, and Gurnee. So, wildly exotic places. A large group of people are selecting our high school and coming here, and really excited to have them, and bringing a lot of new energy that comes with them as well. I want to say congratulations on something that looks really easy, it is very hard. Both Mr. DeBose and Mr. Rogers worked long and hard over the summer to make sure that our computer rollout went smoothly. One of the things that's characteristic is everybody fires up their computers, and everything slows down. If you remember the moment, the jump to light speed in Star Wars, where, you know, off they're gonna go, and they hit the switch, and everything goes, "Wrrr, wrrr, wrrr," one of those. We didn't have that. It was business as usual, and there's a lot of work that was done to make sure that happened. Also, the book buy, book rental, Brittany Chardis and the business folks, as well as the team in the building, what was four hours of waiting. Lena and Luke, I don't know if you remember waiting for many hours your freshman year. Book Buy this year was about a 15- to 20-minute affair, and for the freshmen, there was no check to write because they were able to prepay, and they got a laptop as they walked out the door, it's a pretty good deal. Sorry, you didn't get one. Okay? So, our laptops are seen in action all over the place, and there's a combination of different uses that people have for them, and what's also interesting, different nonuses that people have for them. So, it's interesting watching the teachers say, "No, now is not the time to have your laptops open." It's all about social interaction now, so only one kid can have them, but they're working in groups, and that working in groups is a trend that we want to see continue. You go in the next class, and that teacher is teaching sophomores, and that teacher says, "You know, it's a perfect thing for every kid to have their own computer, and I can't wait until next year, 'cause this exercise will be completely different with it." We also had some news from the Daily Beast. It's working. The reason these folks do lists is because it generates conversation, and here I am talking about them. And so, we were number one in the Midwest, number one in Illinois, and number whatever in the Midwest, it was high. But each of these things is to be taken with a grain of salt. Last year, there was some buzz in the community how we had dropped in the view of U.S. News and World Report. Well, now, we look like rock stars, so with all these things, they need to be taken with a grain of salt, and it all depends on what they're measuring. In this case, they're measuring effectively what quality parents that we have and what quality kids we have. So, there's a real premium on how many kids graduate and how many kids go to college. And we have awesome families and awesome kids that come from those families, and so we're gonna score really, really high on that number. So, it's much more of a tribute. We'd love to take all credit for that, frankly, but we can only take a small portion of it. The most important thing that we did over the summer was work on strategic planning, and that was what we were talking about with Mr. Edson earlier. Some key things there is the board adopted in April or May, the mission and vision and milestones. And milestones are a set of very ambitious targets for us to hit, and we took those things, and we stepped down into a strategic plan and said, "Okay, over the next three, five, and 10 years, how do we step up to those ambitious milestones?" So, we had a meeting in June with 55 people, teachers and board members, community reps, and administrators, and we began to generate ideas on that. We came back again with that same group in August and vetted the work that we had done over the course of the summer. And there are three key words, I would say, you could take away from all of our work on the strategic plan. The first of those is growth, and that is growth in student achievement, growth as a measure that is to be included in teacher evaluation. And also, easily overlooked is the growth of the learning community that the adults represent in the building, and how we foster that. And the second most important word related to this is support. So, as we reconsider and restructure our support models for students and for the adults in the building, what does that look like? How do we target resources more appropriately to drive up the achievement for the students and then also to drive the learning for the adults? And the third word that's gonna come up over and over again is "yet." We're not where we are yet, but we're on the way. There are a couple of key strategies with the strategic plan. The first of those is making the current, the curriculum visible. One of the things that happens with student achievement is the more visible everything is, kids hit the target. And if they don't know what the target is, it's much harder to hit. The second of those is to create effective support models for student and adult learning. We're gonna also have a wide range of metrics, metrics that are not just focused on standardized test scores like the ACT, that's a quality metric for us, but, or the PARC, but also on social-emotional things, so the student well-being. We've also got a culture survey for staff that we're gonna implement. So, we've got a wide range of things that we're gonna be working on, and we look forward to getting down to that work. So, we've linked the work of all the administrators, and by extension, all the staff of the district, very tightly into driving towards the milestones that the board approved this past spring. And we are well on the way, and we will begin vetting all those ideas immediately.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simic. Now, it comes time in our meeting, as we always have, for the opportunity for the public to make any comments that they might wish to make. So, if there's anyone out there in the audience who would like to address the board, I'd ask you to please come up to the podium and do so. Seeing none, let's move on. Next item on the agenda is reports, discussions. Do we have any reports from any of our affiliate organizations? Nope. Okay, the next item is board committee reports, Board Education Committee, Nikki is our chair.
The Education Committee met this past Wednesday, September 3rd, at 7:30 a.m. at the high school. We welcomed our new committee members. This time, Barb Kessman and Reese Markison have joined the committee, and that's as community members, and that's along with Jill Rosa, who was already a committee member. So, we had a good meeting in which Barry and Lauren gave us background on both the one-to-one computing initiative, the Leading Edge Initiative, and also equity and access, which is another important thing that we are working on right now. I think at this point, we've all heard a lot of background on the Leading Edge Initiative. We know that the freshmen all have their Chromebooks now. There is a lot of support in the building for both teachers and students with that initiative. We also talked a little bit in the meeting about ways that we're going to measure the outcomes or the tangible products of that initiative, of which there are several. There is collaboration by Google Docs, student research projects, and new formative assessment tools that Lauren's been talking to us about. We do believe that ultimately, the increased use of technology in the classroom is gonna lead to higher levels of student engagement, which probably will translate to measurable things that we're all used to, like higher ACT scores, but we always have to remember that that's only one way of measuring our students' achievement. But starting out with greater student engagement is definitely the first step, and I think students will achieve more, but they'll also enjoy school more and be better prepared for what's gonna come next. Equity and access has to do with allowing students to have access to higher-level courses if they so choose. We've had a lot of classes where there've been prerequisites that in effect limited the pool of students who are able to really challenge themselves. And if we want to have a rigorous curriculum and allow students to take those risks that, you know, Mr. Simic was talking about a little while ago, we do need to give them access to the most rigorous classes that we offer and let them see what they're able to do. to the most rigorous classes that we offer and let them see what they're able to do. Some of those publications that do ratings, a lot of them base a part of it on how many students take AP classes or how many students score a passing grade on an AP exam. Almost all of our students who take AP exams score a four or five because we have so limited the number of students who take those AP classes that only those who we feel sure are gonna be able to succeed end up taking the test. That's not right. We need to make sure that students have access to those classes and that they are able to challenge themselves. A three on an AP exam is a passing grade, and there's no reason why we shouldn't have students who are taking those exams getting that three. We know that they've learned a lot. We know that they've pushed themselves, and they'll gain from that experience. So that's something that our staff is really working on. The Science Department has already eliminated a lot of their course prerequisites, and as a result, they saw a 32% increase in enrollment in AP classes. So it'll be interesting to see this year how that carries through, how many students end up taking the exam and what their scores are gonna be. Our participation rate has been quite a bit below some of the surrounding districts for exactly that reason. So we're just kinda getting on board with the idea of allowing our students to have access to those classes and to challenge themselves. We also talked a little bit about a gender disparity in some classes. That's always a disturbing thing, and it's a little difficult to figure out where that comes from, but it's something that our staff is working on, trying to make sure that teachers, parents, and counselors are all aware of that because we don't want to further any perception that boys are good at certain things or girls are good at certain things. And really, that will help all of our students achieve their potential. So it was a good meeting, a lot of good background. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 5th. We will have one sooner if staff has anything that they'd like to present to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nikki.
And I should've asked if Dave or Ann had anything to add because they were both there too. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much again. And the Finance and Operations Committee report. I've asked Ted Morbin to present that report.
Yes, thank you. Before I get into that, let me backtrack real quick. North Shore's or North suburban special ed district, we met about two weeks ago, and we did change the board structure where instead of having an executive board and a governing board, now there will be just a single board. In going along with that, one of the executive board members, the superintendent from District 65, has decided to resign from the board, just feeling that she will no longer be needed, and they will still be represented by a board member. Other than that, the NSED seems to be running along quite well. They're managing budget cuts. Having said that, let me jump right into the finance work. The meeting, our last meeting was called to order at 7:30, and I was late because once again, I went to the wrong building. So just for the record, all meetings are now at room 213 at East Campus. And I'm kinda...
Is that a note just for yourself?
That's for myself. Anybody else that wants to go, I don't know how many times...
That would be East Campus.
East Campus, 7:30 a.m., upstairs. Anyway, it was a first order of business was welcoming Amy Keaton to the board. She replaced Ann Sorenson, who joined us here on the big board, I guess. And is now also serving on the Education Committee. There was no public comment, and we did approve the May 7 minutes. The main topic of discussion was the reviewing of the fiscal year 2015 tentative budget. Alan and Brittany did provide a really good recap of the FY14 revenue and expenditure accounts to provide context and confidence to the numbers of the FY15 proposed budget. You could tell a lot of work went into it because, and I'll get into that in a moment, but we viewed out some of the larger detail. This budget is currently on display, and I think according to the agenda, it's on display through 5:30 this afternoon. But I'm sure if anybody still wants to see it, we're looking for an approval meeting on September 30th at 6:00 p.m., I believe. And if anyone, any member of the public wants to come in and review the budget with any board member or Mr. Albus or Ms. Hermes...
Yeah, just to interrupt briefly, that's September 30th at 6:00 p.m. here in this room will be the meeting to formally adopt the tentative budget, which has been out since I think the June board meeting for review by the community and by the board. So September 30th, 6:00 p.m. here at West Campus in the boardroom.
Here in that room, 213. We did propose no changes. It was a very, I think, very tight budget, and again, will be slated for approval. And as we had no discussion unless something major comes up between now and September 30th, we expect it to be approved. Just a quick budget recap. The revenues for 2013, 14 were roughly $46,251, $46,251,000. And in 2014, 15, the budget is going up by 1.64% to $47,000, $47,185,000. So this, again, this 1.64% keeps it below the cost of living, and I think it's really a credit to all the people that worked on it and also looked for places where we could, you know, save additional revenues. On the expenditure side, in 2013, 14 expenditures were $49,845,000. And for 2014, 15, it'll be $47,434,000 for a decrease of 5.34%. So again, everybody that worked on the budget, I think it's an era of everything else rising. I think they did a great job trying to keep a close eye on the numbers. Albus also reported that the district entered into a long-term lease with Seadol five years ago, which we're all aware of. Seadol did invest in this building, a large amount of money, upgrading the facilities for, to make them more suitable for their own use. And as part of that, they also backloaded the rent payments, thinking that early on they were using the money to renovate the building. And they also had some of their clients are leaving Seadol, so it's putting them under some financial pressure. As a result, they asked about ways to, you know, possibly reduce, and, you know, I'm happy to report at this point that we're looking at other ways for them to, you know, take care of their problem, you know, such as subletting portions of the building to other academic, you know, repurposing for other academic institutions. And, you know, we will work with them as necessary, but, you know, at this point, we also do want to generate the revenue that we've kind of built into, you know, cooked into our budget. Moving on, the city of Lake Forest has asked the district to absorb half the cost of the school resource officer, and apparently, that's quite normal in other areas. You know, right now, we're looking into it. No decision has been made, and we did put in a request, Mr. Albus, to get additional information and find out exactly, you know, there's a lot of other issues associated with that, you know, who's gonna be responsible, how much time, you know, would we get, and who we actually works for at that point. Then we had a very unusual request. A company named Ohio Arts proposed a contract where they could license our scout logos, you know, names, and, you know, basically sell gear through CBS. We did look at it. They were offering to give us the 7%, but, you know, we felt like it could really do more harm to the foundations, like, you know, raise money by selling logo gear. And also, some of the local merchants who've been, you know, doing that for years and years and also have been helping out, you know, by taking care of, you know, contracting with our sports teams. So at this point, we decided not to proceed with it. We also have discussed meeting dates and agenda items, including the addition of athletics as a standing agenda item, and also looked at the impact of the Portable Healthcare Act. After that, Carol reported on projects that we completed this summer. These projects included construction of the incubator classroom, which I just saw the other day, and it's really pretty impressive. And they have, you know, 15 mentors who are joining, you know, those are community members that are gonna come in and work with the kids. They've also moved other things around, completed a lot of painting. They've worked in the pool and locker rooms, did tiling, and again, worked on the detention pond. And also, I do want to say, the next meeting is scheduled for September 17th, and we actually put up a meeting dates for the next six meetings, which, and we're really only expecting to have four of those, that we just kinda wanted to have the flexibility so that we can meet when necessary and not just meet for the sake of meeting. Anyway, those dates are September 17th, October 22nd, November 12th, March 4th, and May 6th. All meetings will be at 7:30 in room 213 at East Campus. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Ted. If I just may add, the Finance and Operations Committee did unanimously recommend to the board acceptance of the tentative budget. So moving on then, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Okay, that brings us to action items, and the first action item gives us the opportunity to tell Monty how we really feel about him. We, now that he's gone, we gave him the little framed resolution, and now we have to approve it or not, you know? Do I have a motion to approve that resolution, which I read, please?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Nikki. Do we need a roll call vote, Ms. Barron, please?
Mrs. Snoblin?
Aye.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mr. Schreger?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Thank you, fellow board members, and now we have to consider approval of the East Campus maintenance building bid. Mr. Albus, I presume, will lead us in that discussion?
Yep, and if I could, I'd like to talk about items B and C because they are related, and I would ask for Mrs. Snoblin's and Mr. Block's indulgence for a few moments because I'll talk about some of the history on this and the evolution of the project, because this really has evolved over time. This really relates to the replacement of the track at East Campus, and we went from a four-lane track to a six-lane track, and in doing so, the track from east to west expanded, which necessitated the demolition of the bleachers on both the east and the west side. Under both sets of bleachers was storage space. So as we embarked on that project, the first thing we started talking about was how to replace that storage space, and one of the things we considered was adding on to the north end of the fieldhouse. If you can envision that area, there's about 20 feet between the building and the sidewalk, and I'm talking about where the detention area is now as well. As we got more involved in that and the cost involved with attaching to the building, because at first, it was thought that would be an efficient use of building on and adding some storage space, it became cost prohibitive. Then we started talking about, is there space in the practice fields or out in the grassy area? And made the decision to salvage the storage area that was under the west side bleachers. But that wasn't quite enough for the site, and East Campus itself is on a very, very small footprint. So we had also had planned at some point to replace the garage that was on Edgewood that was part of the house that we used as a construction office back when all the renovations took place. So then we turned our attention to that space and said, "Between the space that was under the West Campus bleachers, and if we revamp that garage space, can we cobble together enough storage space to meet our needs?" And we literally sat down, Tom Rowe, our groundskeeper, inventoried all the equipment, sat down with the architects, and they literally drew it all out to scale and then built a garage around that. And so that's how we evolved. Then that went from a garage to, you know, if we're using that space, we really need heat and water in there for the guys to be able to work appropriately. Well, unbeknownst to me, that really changes from a slab foundation for a garage to a foundation. So the cost of, at one time, and Mr. Block and Mrs. Snoblin may have seen a number of, I think we had 50, 60, or $70,000 to replace that garage. Well, that's now doubled because the scope of the project has doubled. But had we not doubled this here, we would've been building space someplace else because we have the need for it. So that's how we evolved to where we are. Carol White has worked with the city, with Kathy Cerniak, has been in very close contact with the neighbor who is next to the garage, who has been a great, great neighbor and a great partner to us, and he actually wants us to build this space because right now, the guys pull all the equipment out to get things out, and it looks like a used car lot during the day. So we're gonna, we're gonna move the garage onto our side of the parking lot so that it's not as intrusive to his property. That's part of the design as well. So after a lot of talk and a lot of iterations, we came up with a design. We went out to bid, and before you tonight are two bids, and I'll talk about those because red flags came up on both of them. We received a number of emails today and appropriate questions. And the one I'll start with is the concrete foundation, where the low bid is significantly below all the other bids. And that causes us concern too, because when we open bids and we see them really tight together, we know everybody looked at the project the same way, interpreted it the same way. When we see a spread, that causes concern that somebody either miscalculated something or didn't understand the scope or made an error. So when that happens, and it happened in this case, Carol White contacted the low bidder to review the scope of the project and to review the numbers. Now, if somebody just says, "Yeah, I made a mistake. I went out," they need to prove to us that they made a mathematical error, but that wasn't the case here. The contractor said, "I understand the scope of the work. I understand my number, and I stand by my number." Carol then contacted References, is that correct? And found them to be a reputable bidder. So we're bringing that forth and recommending approval on that. The next bid is for the actual building, and we only received one bid. Now legally, we're required to advertise the bid, make bid specs available to potential bidders, and open the bids in a public bid opening and advertise the bid. We did all those things. Carol also went beyond that and sent out bid packets to four potential companies, but we only received the one bid, and that occasionally happens. So when that happens, we take a look at, where did it come in? Is it where we thought? So in planning this project, going back several months, and as we're early stages of planning the budget, Carol had upgraded this project to $140,000 in our capital projects plan. So when we look at adding the cost of the building, the concrete, and a requirement the city has asked us to do, which is to do a significant amount of landscaping around this, we're still $23,000 under what had been estimated back then, so we felt the numbers were good. But Carol's also made some other calls to contractors, and some of the contractors who had helped her put numbers together, is that correct? So it really comes down to a case-by-case basis. When we get one bid, we look at it and try to assess, do we think it's a fair price? And based on our estimates of the price or the project and people Carol had talked to, we came to that conclusion, and so that's why we're recommending that we move forward with that tonight. And Carol, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Just that there was a project that...
Just that there was a project that, it's hard to do apples-to-apples based on your requirements. It's like a car. Do you want leather interior? Do you want cloth? Do you want an overhang? Do you want, you know, gingerbread on it? Do you want vinyl siding? So, I talked to a rep from Wick Builders, which is one of the big building companies in this area and in the Midwest. And he just did recently the Catholic Archdiocese in Mundaline, and it was approximately a 4,000 square foot building, and ours is approximately 3,000 square feet. He came in at, for his building, 66,000, and it was a basic building like ours, and ours was 61,600. So, I'm very confident we're right there. You have to remember, the Catholic Church does not require prevailing wage as we do. So, I believe that's the difference. So, I'm comfortable with the price of this. I think we're getting the right square footage price. And Bowler Construction, just, people just raved when I called their references. They've done many, many in the building. They just finished one at CLC. Where else did they do one? And they were the low bid at that job as well. And I talked to that gentleman, and he's just said they did a great, outstanding job. So, I'm comfortable. I'm confident with these numbers.
Carol, will they stand by their work, I'm assuming? Do we get some type of a guarantee for their work product?
Absolutely. There's a one-year warranty, yes, on their labor, on the installation. And it's a 20-year on the building itself.
Got it.
Any questions?
Any other questions of Mrs. White, while she's up at the podium?
No, I just want to thank you. You know, any project that the size that comes in 24,000 under budget, I'm happy to see.
Good, I am too.
One thing that wasn't immediately obvious when we saw them as separate bids was that the components of this project are the building, the foundation, and the landscaping, and that's it, correct?
That's correct. There was some soil testing that we did just to be safe because we ran into soil problems in the renovation of the building. So, we did a soil test just to be safe on the recommendation of our architect.
Okay. And so, the three of those together came in 23,000 or whatever, under that estimate?
Correct.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Another comment, Mrs. White and her crew, and also Mr. Albus have spent a lot of time working with the neighbors. As we know, you know, we are a very large neighbor compared to some of the folks around the building, and I really appreciate the work that has been done to reach out to those neighbors and to be as accommodating as we possibly can. So, in the track project and also on this project, we're working very hard to be amenable to suggestions that they have. In this case, we're actually providing an improvement for the neighbor that he finds desirable, and that's really good.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? We'll start with A, excuse me, with B, the maintenance building bid itself, the single bid?
Yeah, I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the East Campus Maintenance Building bid as presented.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Are there any comments, board members? Well, I would just add my thanks to you, Alan, and you, Carol, for doing this extra work. I know a number of the board members had raised questions. A single bid always sets off red flags, especially when it's right next to and part of a project that has another bid where, I think, five out of six bidders are double the low bidder. It makes you wonder if that, if that low bidder on the concrete had not submitted a bid, we'd be 12,000 dollars over budget as opposed to 28,000 under. So, appreciate the extra work. And anytime the district, you know, has a sizable request for quotations that goes out and we only get a single bid, I'd encourage you to present the same kind of comparative evidence so that the board is able to put in perspective what this, this single bid means. So, thank you. I think we're ready for a roll call then, Ms. Barrett.
Mr. Morgan?
Aye.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Okay, then we'll move on to C, the approval of the East Campus Maintenance Garage Concrete Foundation bid, which I think we've really already discussed. Thank you, Alan, again, and Carol. Do I have a motion on that, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the East Campus Maintenance Garage Concrete Foundation bid as presented.
In a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ann. Any comments? Any further comments, board members? Roll call, Ms. Barrett?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mr. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Okay, now we move on to approval of the Pearl Snack Vendor Contract. Mr. Albus, I presume you're still up?
As stated in Mrs. Hermes's cover memo, we had a contract with a vendor that went under. We switched them out. That partnership worked for a while, but we're looking to make a change somewhat because of service and quality of products, expired products and things like that. So, we went out looking for other vendors, and because it's a contract, that's why it's on for approval tonight for the board. But it's relatively minor, as you can see by the numbers here.
Do I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Pearl Snack Vendor Contract as presented.
Thank you, Nikki. A second?
Second.
Any comment, questions? Okay, Ms. Barrett?
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mr. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
That brings us to approval of release of executive session minutes between January 2014 and June 2014. I don't know that there's any background necessary, board members. I think it's relatively straightforward. Are there any questions or comments about that? They are fairly benign by nature because of the legal requirements. Do I have a motion, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the release of executive session minutes, January 2014 to June 2014, as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mr. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Thank you, board members. And now, we move to the last action item, approval of the Human Resources Report. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Black. I'd like to ask Dr. Wilcox to comment on quite an expansive list of hiring that we have done here, just to give a brief overview of why it looks the way it does at this time of year.
Okay. Hello. We did have quite a few hires. If you looked through the report, the vast majority were in two areas, support staff and athletics. Those were our late July and August hires. That's not atypical. We did have several support staff that ended up getting teaching jobs, and so, we had to fill those positions. We had three positions to fill in the library, one of which is unfilled. So, we are, we have one final hire that we are still looking for. I do have to say, I was really impressed with the hard work of the department chairs to find people to fill these very important roles that had specialized experience and that could add value, whether it was in the library or with our special education students. We got some people with some really unique experiences to come on board, and the department chairs felt very confident with the people they're bringing in. So, again, the vast, there is a long list, but most of that is in those two areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Dr. Wilcox while she's at the podium?
Yeah, just a question about the report, the format of the report. Is there a way to include any market benchmark data so that when we're looking at the rates, we've got a sense for how current that is and where that data's coming from?
As far as the, what we're spending, well, when it comes to a teacher, that's all just going to be based on contract and as far as their experience goes. We do have a range that we use for our support staff, and it's completely, it's also, it's a set range, and so, we base it on experience, and then that's where we place them. So, would you, would you just want more information as far as our ranges that we're using or where they're placed specifically?
Yeah, just the, some comparative data to, based on that experience, you know, this is what they're paying in surrounding districts.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if, I don't know if there's a source of data. I don't know if, Jen, we've, I don't know if we've talked about that.
Certainly for full-time certified staff, there definitely is. I know Mr. Albus is part of his ongoing preparations at, you know, involved in looking at the LFAA contract, assemble such data in many different formats, lifetime earnings, earnings along the scale, those sorts of things. With regard to people who earn hourly pay, I don't know if there are similar competitive schedules out there.
We had a little internal discussion today about that. We're going to have to do some more follow-up on it because there are, as you start talking about it and peeling back the onion, there are lots of different layers to this. And so, we need to talk a little bit more and then come back and talk to you about some of that.
Sure.
As the board has discussed, I think, on many occasions, there is deep interest in benchmarking and an understanding of what the competitive comparative environment is, both on the North Shore of Chicago and beyond. So, I know this isn't new to you collectively, and I look forward to, you know, working with you as we develop, you know, better systems so that every time we go through a hire, Mr. Simic and I and others have talked about this at quite some length, but, you know, we're not starting at square one and trying to reinvent the wheel. So, thank you.
Sounds good.
Do I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report? So moved. Second?
Second.
Do board members have any further comments or questions? If not, Ms. Barrett will have the roll call.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Hearing none, I would ask for roll call, I guess, Ms. Barrett. Oh, we need a motion, I'm sorry. Yes, we do.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Barrett, I'm a rookie, keep that in mind here.
Mr. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
That brings us to the fact that we had two FOIA requests during the past month. Mr. Simic, I don't know if you want to comment on either of those?
Unfamiliar to both of them.
Okay, that brings us lastly to our announcements. On Wednesday, September 10, there will be a late start day at the high school, 9:50 AM. On Wednesday, October 1, a late start day beginning at 9:30 AM. On Monday, October 13, is Columbus Day. There will be no school. And on Tuesday, October 14, we'll have our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM here at West Campus. As was discussed earlier, there is a special meeting scheduled for September 30 at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom for adoption of our budget for the following year. So, with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.